All right, good evening. This is Tuesday, July 26th. This is the public hearing on proposed changes to the Rhinebeck Central School District Code of Conduct. I'll turn the meeting over to Joe and he can-
Okay. Expend upon the code-
Thank you. Well, I'm not sure I'll be doing a lot of expounding, but we did have a conversation at our last board meeting about the changes recommended by the ad hoc committee on the Code of Conduct, which is made up of teachers, administrators, parents, and as well as high school students. And the major change that was recommended, that was a topic of our conversation at our last meeting, was to include a possession of tobacco, specifically cigarettes, and as well as e-cigarettes, a violation of the Code of Conduct. Its use has been in our Code of Conduct for a number of years, but this increased the Code of Conduct to also include possession. So there was some board level discussion about that at our last meeting. One of the- one of the- I'm not sure I know what- I'm not sure about the plural of impetus. Impetuses? Impetussa? I don't know. But anyway, one of the impetuses for including or for the recommendation to include possession of e-cigarettes was the difficulty that the administrative staff is having, for lack of a better phrase, catching kids in the act because it's different from a regular cigarette, which requires lighting and smoke. The e-cigarettes much less able to be used, much more surreptitiously than tobacco products. And it's- they tell me, being our administrators, tell me it's relatively easy for a student to be vaping in the bathroom and to hide that and not have any clue. And they're concerned about kids who are using e-cigarettes as well as tobacco products. They point out that it's not- I mean, it occurs here. It's not like they're number one issue or problem, but it is an issue and some kids do come to them and complain that, you know, some individuals are in a restroom either smoking or vaping. And I think vaping is kind of catching on a little bit more now that it's easy to possess and easy to use and difficult to detect or to catch. So that was like kind of the push for that. And then I think that- and I did meet with Ed the morning after our board meeting last time, and Ed said, you know, their feeling was, well, if you're going to make possession of these cigarettes, a violation of the code, then you ought to make possession of regular cigarettes a violation of the code as well. So that's really where that came from. I did also pursue the topic with our legal counsel after our discussion two weeks ago. And I put in your memo the feedback that I got from our legal counsel, being that the feeling that it was consistent with the fact that we are required by Health Department Law to be a smoke-free campus. So if that's going, you know, why else is a kid in possession of any of those items if not to use them in school? And that certainly is in their opinion, it's consistent with maintaining a smoke-free environment. So they didn't feel that, again, from their legal opinion, that it was a legal overreach to have that included in our Code of Conduct. So I'm just reporting back. And as I mentioned to you in my memo to you, for that reason, I did not change that. I left that in the Code of Conduct, given the administrative support and the legal counsel's support. I didn't take it out. That's certainly up to, you know, the purview of the board. It's your policy. Ultimately, you don't have to accept a recommendation from a group of parents, teachers, and administrators, or for me, for that matter. I mean, it is ultimately your policy. And Ed did point out the- another policy that we have, the eligibility policy for interstitial athletics next to curricular activities, where it does call out possession of those items as being a violation of that policy. So then it raises the question, well, if we don't have it here and we have it there, should we not at least be consistent within our policy? So that's kind of- that's my homework report for this topic of discussion at- from our last meeting. I think the other- there was a topic brought up at our last meeting that wasn't a recommended change to the Code of Conduct, but there was a question brought up about use of cellphones and why not allow, at least for high school kids, because the way it reads in our Code of Conduct currently is that high school students may use cellphones in cafeteria. I think, again, I have to go back and read the exact verbiage, even in classrooms with the permission of the teacher, especially if they're being used for some academic purpose, which a number of our teachers are starting to use or allow students to use cellphones for, you know, for looking things up and whatnot. But the question that was raised was why not having them use- allow them, them being high school students, to use their mobile phones in the hallways between classes? And I brought that up to Ed. Ed was- fortunately, Ed was the only secondary-level administrator here, John, that had a few days off. So Ed was my guinea pig, but I did talk to that with him about that. And, you know, his just-off-the-cuff response was, A, it's very difficult for us to enforce that, the current policy. But his feeling was, why give them another place that's sanctioned for them to use their phones? I mean, kids do use them anyway. He said, in that four-minute passing period, that they'd be spending all their time, you know, running down the halls, trying to deal with kids with cellphones. It doesn't seem to be an issue, but I was- I thought about the conversation we had with our pupil personnel people and just that whole moth to a flame regarding, especially young people, and mobile phones. And, you know, I'm thinking, do we really want to add another place where they can- where we're sanctioning them using them? Again, probably not the biggest disciplinary issue we have in our school. But again, if that's something that the board wants to change in their policy, that certainly, you know, that's your- it's not coming as a recommendation from the Code of Conduct Committee. And, you know, we can certainly talk about that this coming year as well. But it didn't come up at that meeting. And typically, those cellphone related issues have come up usually from teachers. But there was no- there was no talk about that one way or the other. So again, just want to report back to you on the items that we talked about, the pages in the boards, other than the things we've already talked about. Yeah, we added smartwatches now that some kids are using smartwatches as surrogate smartphones. So we added that, well, at least recommended that that be added. We did, on page nine, we did clarify the State Education Department's guidelines for possessing mobile phones in testing situations. And they've been strictly banned for quite a few years, but the committee felt that, or at least some of the people on the committee felt that that warranted making that very clear in our policy. And it's read to them at the beginning of each region's exam, but they felt we should put that in our Code of Conduct. And let me see, what else? What else was a change? Because those changes occurred in a number of different places. Oh, on page 15, under the detention section, we did change the times of detention to match the times to our start and end times that we're going to be piloting this, start of this school year. And so I think there's one more. Oh, and yeah, on page 21, somebody had brought this up last time in terms of the use of the word incorrigible. And as I think I mentioned that night, this is taken directly out of the child protective services PINs petition verbiage. So again, we felt that this should at least mirror what's on the books for them. Whether we understand what it means or not is another matter, but somebody at some point will have to define incorrigible for us if we have a student who we think may be. Again, are we processing dozens of PINs petitions in a given year? I mean, if we've processed a dozen in my 18 years here, that's probably way more than we have. But it occurs occasionally. And of course, once kids hit 16, they're not- they don't fall under this. That slices out a big chunk of our secondary population right off the bat because they're- the PINs process doesn't address kids who will be on the age of 16. So those are the things that have been suggested, these changes to your policies. Everything else is the way it's been, at least for the last year. Who was first? Lisa?
Okay. Thank you. Joe, I appreciate your report on the changes, particularly insofar as they dealt with the issue of possession of tobacco products. That's something that I had spoken to at the last meeting. And I certainly agree with the concept that if, for several reasons, several big reasons, the board is prohibiting possession of tobacco products in schools, that doesn't make sense not to mirror that disciplinary section. So I'm happy with that being the case. I just want to make one point while I'm trying to ask about it. I know that we've never had an issue at board level anyway with any of the principals over disciplining for any of the Code of Conduct issues. I just want to emphasize with respect to this one that the fact that we're making this change and the fact that we are giving principals the authority to discipline students shouldn't be taken as encouragement that they impose discipline or that you think that discipline for, you know, possession, you know, in the abstract is necessarily a good idea. It's just that the principals now have the Code of Conduct authority to do it in an appropriate case. And I know that they, as they always have, will weigh particular sort of success in a particular extent. You know, having one cigarette in one's pocket in time is not the equivalent of, you know, carrying cartons around at once. A backpack with the intent of selling it or distributing it to other students, I would say. With otherwise intended for that, I appreciate it. Please thank you.
Sure. Well done. Do that.
I also wanted to say to the point about use of cellphones in the hallway, since we're going to have one minute less of passing time, at least for this pilot year, probably minimizing distraction in the hallway is not a bad idea. I mean, if it's already the case that the principals do have some, you know, issues around this, your recommendation and their recommendation seems to make a lot of sense.
I hate for that to be the reason why we're not able to get kids to class in three minutes when otherwise they would be able to. Again, we're going to have to see how that plays out in the real world. All right. Any other comments? We have no public present other than our newspaper report. Would you like to make a public comment?
Yeah, let's get out of here before lunch.
All right. So if there's no other comments on the Code of Conduct, I'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
All right. All is in favor. Unanimous, that motion passes.
You should have a motion to declare my clerk pro tem.
Okay. May I have a motion to appoint Meg Cadisco, clerk pro tem?
So moved.
So moved.
All is in favor. Unanimous, that motion passes. Thank you, Meg, for helping out. And I'm going to call the meeting to order. I guess I've already done that, sort of. This is a regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education, Tuesday, July 26th, 2016. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the July 12th, 2016 annual organizational and regular meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion of changes to the minutes? Okay. All is in favor. Unanimous, that motion passes. We have an opportunity for public comment. Again. Thank you. And we'll move on to the 2016-17 fire inspection report. Okay. This is, you'll recall, or many of you will recall, an annual requirement of every school district in the state. You'll also recall that the scheduling of the fire inspection gets moved up by one month each year. Last year, we were doing this towards the end of the summer. This year, we had our fire inspection in July. And we're reporting and discussing it here as part of your agenda to document the fact that you've been made aware of the fact that we've had the fire inspection, what the results were, and probably most importantly, that any nonconformances have been corrected. There are two, generally speaking, there are two types of nonconformances, kind of the minor ones and the major ones. The major ones require a reinspection. None of the nonconformances this year required a reinspection. They're relatively minor. We fixed them ourselves. And on one of the pages in the report that we get from BOSI's, their safety office does the inspection for us, they were pretty much, pretty much limited to outlets not being grounded and emergency lights, having the light bulb burned out. Obviously, there are things that we need to do. What we try to do is, what we try not to do is run around before the inspection and fix a bunch of things. I mean, it's not like we don't ever fix them, but we want to have as much of a real-time inspection as it's possible for us to have. And, you know, to be honest with you, these emergency lights are, you know, when you have that many lights in a building, they burn out fairly regularly. And then you could walk down the hall and it's on, and walk back down the hall 20 minutes later and it's out. So you'll see there are a number of those with the ground fault, you know, what ground fault interruptors are, you know, if you- if there's some water that comes in contact with that, it prevents it. It prevents a shock, of course. All of our classrooms in the elementary school have sinks with outlets not very far from them. And that's where some of these, two of them, well, at least the one in Chancellor, was within six feet of a classroom outlet. Just so you know, not only did our crew fix that one, but they replaced all the outlets in Chancellor with ground fault interrupter as well as anything else that was a violation. So Chancellor's now totally done. Every outlet there that's near a sink or a water source has been rolled over to ground fault interrupter outlet. And, yeah, it was one issue with an extension cord. That's, again, we try not to go around. It's a little easier to get a real-time inspection when it happens during the school year, you know, during the summer. Typically, teachers are taking stuff down, putting stuff away, so it's not, you don't get the same level of how is this working on a daily basis, but you can't control when the inspection is. Next year, it'll be in June. It'll move up a month every year. So, but this is, again, for Steve's benefit, this is pretty normal. And typically, it's minor stuff that by the end of the day, our guys have already corrected it. It's done. It's not an issue, but shouldn't happen, and we need to bring it to your attention and let you know what the issues have been. So you don't have to approve the report. You just have to have heard the report, and having it on our agenda takes care of that as a requirement. Lisa?
Very minor question on the appendix. Is that date wrong? July 23, 2015?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Should be 2016.
That's right. Yeah. You're right. Yep. And we have, or just so you know, we have to show the State Education Department that we have fixed the nonconformances before they will give us a building permit for the following year. And obviously, if we don't have a building permit, then we can't have school here. And we've already submitted these, and we already have our building permits for the current year. So we're good to go for September. All right. Any other questions? Diane?
Other question, just to- shall we?
Yeah. What I like is that they get a fix as soon as a problem is brought to their attention. So, thank you. I'll pass that along. All right. Move on to the 2016-17 board goal development. Okay. Hopefully, this will be pretty short. We actually have a date. We're having, well, I-
Time is the best.
Walk a mile in my moccasins. Now, we don't even have all the committee schedules set up. That's another agita-inducing task that I'm undertaking right now. So thanks for your patience with that. But we are, we will be meeting at 4:00 PM on Monday, August 29th, to have our annual board goals workshop. So not to take advantage of the fact that there's a lot of, it seems like a lot of time between now and August 29th, but it'll be on us before we know it, especially with people taking vacation time. So please, I would emphasize again, please send your ideas to Mark, who will collect them and distribute them to us, so we're not starting with a blank slate on the afternoon of the 29th. And I mentioned a few of the things that are on my, and I think our collective radars for the coming school year, so we will at least throw them in the mix. I don't have anything else, but-
I just have a quick question, which is, if we go into the, I'm thinking of our newest member, if we go onto the BOE page on the website, is it readily available, our goals from past years, just so Steve can see?
It's on the, they're on the website, yeah.
As a cumulative list?
Yeah. Or separate-
I know I provided you with cumulative lists. I'll have to check if there's a cumulative list posted on the website or not. I can always give Steve, I can give Steve the last 15 years of-
Might be enough.
You don't have to read. You don't have to read that far in, but-
But just a few years, so that we can get a sense of, for instance, certain goals we have retained over a several-year period, working towards completion, they're multi-year goals. Sometimes a goal is really just particular, right, to a single year.
I'll send them along to Steve.
I was thinking about that this afternoon. I found a document that said five years of board goals, but it was from 2007. So I thought, well, that's really not relevant at this point. So I'll keep looking.
I'll send it to everybody.
That's good.
That's all I have on that particular agenda. Laura?
Just a quick question mark on our thoughts to you. Do you want those thoughts written as potential goals, or do you want them just as discussion points for the whole group?
If you have some language that you think would be a good, you know, goal, then by all means, send it. I mean, really, I think we're looking for ideas, but, you know, the more we have put together before we have our workshop, you know, hopefully, the quicker we can make decisions and, you know, edit the wording and all that and have it done. So if you have something, please send it along.
Lisa?
So I just wanted to follow up on the exchange that Steve and I had this afternoon. I'm not sure if all the board members were included in that. I just can't remember. But Steve asked what I thought was a very good question, which is, you know, how do we as a board determine whether we've met our goals? And, you know, what sort of measures do we use for that? Quantitative, qualitative, some delving of those elements? That's not something that we've really dug into. We've sort of talked about in the past about, you know, well, we need to look back at our goals and see how we're doing on them periodically. But I do think that one of the things that we should talk about, either in the workshop or subsequently, is how the board takes the measure of its own goals. Partly, those goals are executed by the administration, passed out to the staff, but there traditionally been a few goals, you know, over the years that have been things that the board does, like the advocacy goal, for example, from last year, which was really more things for the board in conjunction with Joe than for the staff to execute.
Correct.
And so I think that's a worthwhile subject for the discussion.
They do tend to be more qualitative than quantitative. And, you know, as part of the discussion that we have on the 29th and the thinking that kind of goes into leading up to that, we can have that discussion as to whether a particular goal lends itself to, you know, for example, I mean, just throw this out for, you know, if we were talking about an advocacy goal, you know, we could set a goal that we would, you know, we would engage in at least X number of outreach efforts to legislators or whatever. I mean, we could quantify some of those without too much of a, without too much of a stretch. So we need to decide, is that something, you know, do we want to tie ourselves to a number regarding a particular goal? Certainly, that would help. If we say we're going to reach out at least six times around six different, I'm just picking numbers, six out of the clear blue sky, and then we only do it three times, I mean, we're going to have that discussion too at the end of the school year when we look back on what we've accomplished or what we haven't. So it's certainly fair game for our discussion. Anything else on board goals? All right. Move on to good news. Diane?
I think this is good news. I got the letter from Davenport, the sports season, and that the forms are now going to be online.
Yeah.
I think that, I haven't done it yet. The fact that they will be all stored, you don't have to bring them anywhere and figure out to do this.
Incredible.
Excellent program.
Yeah, we're, just so you know, we're piloting that with the athletic forms, but in the back of our minds, we're thinking, could this, should this replace the beginning of the year packet and the stuff you fill out for the nurse? And there are a lot of potential applications. There is more of a cost, the more, the more things you use it for. So we thought, you know what? Let's dip our toe in the water, try it with a motivated group of people, like parents who want to get their kids into the athletic program for that school year and see how it works. Then we can always, you know, take it further if we want. So this is, in our way of thinking, this is like the first attempt, but there's, you know, there's a cost to it. So there's a cost-benefit consideration there, too. How much are we spending to do what? And the other thing- what? And the other thing we want to see is, we know that we have some, some parents still with, with our, with our digital report cards, who insist on getting a hard copy mailed to them. So if we wind up having a large percentage of parents who want to fill these forms out hard copy, then it's going to kind of defeat the purpose, especially for, for the cost that's involved. So again, we'll see how it works, and we'll let you know. And you'll let us know if it's easy to use.
It's easy.
That's, that's great to hear. Seriously, because it's-
Maybe it may not be good news.
Well, we have, we have one good, we have one vote in favor, so.
Chief's in roles.
Okay. Good. 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 Thank you for mentioning that.
All right. Lisa?
I just want to make note of something that is rarely noted, but I think it's good, should be mentioned every once in a while. And that is that last week, Laura and Joe and I attended a continuing education program at NISBA on school law, developments legislatively and case law for the past year. In addition to it being very informative and useful to us, because these are all topics that we deal with over the course of each year, I just wanted to say generally that I think that we take for granted the benefits that we get from NISBA, you know, get this whole menu of things that they provide for us with our membership. And some of them, like this program and the convention, and other sort of occasions to get together and hear about important topics, are really useful to us. And then, you know, the news slip service and the webinars and things like that also give us some school information. So I think it's good for us to acknowledge that that's a source of useful material and knowledge. And I mean, it's certainly, I think it's cool for the administration to know that the money that it spends to have the district participate in this, but this money well spent.
In spite of the fact that I walk out of there every year with a huge migraine.
[laughing]
It's like, oh, I can't, I can't believe it. It could be worse. And it's better to know it and deal with it than, than not. So it's, it's, that is always a good day of, of law-related stuff, frustrating as it sometimes is.
All right. Other good news?
Yeah, I just mentioned, I'm not sure how many of you saw this. Okay, well, I, so did I. I mean, I just got it.
Oh, yes.
You've seen this publication? I'm not sure if this is the first one, or-
Second one.
Yeah, I missed, I missed the first one, because, because I don't live into Rhinebe- in Rhinebeck, but I did get my name on the, on the mailing list, and this came today. And if you read this, this piece, there is, there is a comment. They also, this is about a family living in, in our area, and I'll quote it. It says, "They also feel that their children will learn that they can carve out their own paths in life, among other things, that they are learning as, quote, 'very happy,' unquote, students in Rhinebeck schools, where Kira and Nick feel that the kids are getting an excellent education." So, nice to see that in, in print. And the feature story, I believe it's the feature story in their September issue is going to be specifically on, on Rhinebeck schools. So, yeah, I didn't, I did an interview with, with Mary Beth several weeks ago. So, so good, good ink.
All right. Other good news? All right, move on to old business. Is there any other old, any old business?
Item.
Okay. We have another opportunity for a public comment?
[laughing] I'm not going to know.
All right. Move on to other. I do have one item of other. As you know, I'm representing
the school district on the Thompson-Mazarella Park Committee. So I'll just give you a brief update on what's happening at the park committee. So the committee is trying to get a plan together for Phase Two of the park development. It's kind of been a work in progress for a while. Hopefully, by this month, we may have a, the committee will be presenting a plan for Phase Two, formal plan, or at least a concept for Phase Two, to the planning boards, Village and Town. And with that, there's a partnership of the baseball and so, and soccer leagues that wants to develop the sports fields in Phase Two. They're anxious to get an approval so that they can get the fields leveled and, and grass planted, because it takes a couple of growing seasons to get the grass established before the fields can be formally, you know, built. There's a lot to do in Phase Two. There's, you know, parking and the pavilion and the fields. So the, the committee is trying to get the money committed. There's several different organizations. There's the county, the Frost Foundation, the Thompson Trust, putting in funds for the pavilion. So hopefully, when Phase Two gets approved, they can start construction on the pavilion, and the field partnership can get grass planted so that the fields can get started. That's really all that's happening right now, but seeing light at the end of the tunnel now toward Phase Two. So that's, that's a good thing. Laura?
So, once they get approval or make modifications based on the planning board, it doesn't have to be approved by both the village and the town boards as well?
Not really 100% up on all of the, you know, rules about that, but yes, I believe that's true. But really, the big holdup has been because they decided to change from a turf field to a grass field for Phase Two. There's been some engineering work that's had to be done, and there's been some discussion about, you know, who's responsible for that, paying for that work. So, but that's been done now. So we were, as of last week's meeting, waiting for the report on that, and then hope to get a submission done by either the August or September meeting, so that Phase Two can be approved and moved toward development. So Diane?
Is there any estimated date for completion of Phase Two?
No. Not yet. There's a lot of money to be raised. I mean, they have a commitment for money for the pavilion, most of the money, but there's a lot of other money that has to be raised for the parking and all sorts of other things. So I don't think we'll see any completion for quite a while, but at least with that approval, the, the grass can get planted for the field, so that by the time everything else is ready, the fields can be ready to play on. So.
Okay.
All right. Any other other? All right. So we can move on to our action items. Is there anyone who would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the 2016-17 school year coaching staff. Soccer, boys varsity, Justin Weisenthal, $4,532. Boys JV, Henry Frischknecht, $2,830. Boys modified, Ryan Edson, $2,308. Girls varsity, Matt Grandy, $4,532. Girls JV, Mark Berg, $2,830. Girls modified, TBD, $2,308. Volleyball, varsity, Ashley Jurese, $3,612. JV, TBD, $2,567. Modified, TBD, $2,308. Cross country, boys varsity, Chris Sneed, $3,469. Girls varsity, Kim Sneed, $3,469. Modified, Jennifer Ramo, $2,187. Golf, varsity, David Jutton, $2,816. Field hockey, varsity, Mary Fleishower, $4,532. JV, Anita Thompson, $2,635. Swimming, girls varsity, David Airstock, $4,532. Boys varsity, to be determined, $4,532. Boys basketball, varsity, David Airstock, $4,532. JV, to be determined, $3,136. Modified, Mark Berg, $2,541. Girls basketball, varsity, to be determined, $4,532. JV, George Nicolatos, $3,136. Modified, Natalie Sarkowski, $2,541. Lacrosse, varsity, to be determined, $3,886. Tennis, varsity, David Jutton, $2,944. Baseball, varsity, George Nicolatos, $3,886. JV, to be determined, $2,837. Modified, to be determined, $2,308. Softball, varsity, to be determined, $3,886. JV, to be determined, $2,837. Modified, to be determined, $2,308. Crew, girls varsity, Ralph Bosco, $4,532. Boys varsity, Doug Mulqueen, $4,532. Girls, boys, novice, to be determined, $3,136. Track, varsity, distance and hurdles, Chris Sneed, $4,032. Varsity, sprinting and jumping, Justin Randall, $4,032. Varsity, throwing and vaulting, to be determined, $4,032. Modified, distance and throwing, David Airstock, $2,478. Modified, sprinting and jumping, Mark Berg, $2,478.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Diane?
I have a question. I think it's a good opportunity to thank all of our members for the time and the time.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor? That's all except Fleishower and abstaining Fleishower. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2016 curriculum program and clerical work.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional department chairs and advisors for Rhinebeck High School for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Emily Davison to the district level position of district, Director of Special Education Services, a four-year probationary position with an annual salary of $113,000 prorated, including benefits as described in the Rhinebeck Administrator's Agreement effective August 29, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I might be too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I just want to say how grateful we are to the committee for putting in the work to find this excellent candidate, and we're very fortunate indeed.
Okay. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the reappointment of part-time teachers for the 2016-17 school year effective September 1, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the reappointment of part-time, non-instructional personnel for the 2016-17 school year effective September 1, 2016.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of emergency, conditional substitute instructional and non-instructional staff for the 2016-17 school year.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Laura?
Just a question. Given some of the challenges we faced this year with substitutes and not getting them in a timely way, is there been some discussion about a process for ensuring that teachers who know that they're going out call for substitutes in a timely manner so that we're not stuck scrambling at the last minute?
We're, we continue to work with our building principals to encourage their teachers to do that. I've been personally scanning the, the list each morning and raising questions when I notice a situation where it appears that, that substitute might have been able to, have been lined up before that morning or the night before. And, and sometimes, there's a legitimate reason, and, and sometimes, we find an issue with, with the, the program that, that calls out for subs. With, that's then, we work with BOSI's to try to get that straightened out. It's, it's kind of an ongoing thing, but I think we made a little bit, a little bit of headway with some of the teachers who wait until the last minute, and the, the building principals are hearing it from me, and my hope is that then their teachers are hearing that from them. Because I asked the principals to give me an explanation, you know, how did this happen? It's a conference. They, they had to know before this morning that they were going to a conference. Like I said, sometimes I get an answer that makes sense, and sometimes I get a, well, they forgot. I said, well, they're the ones who are complaining about not having subs, so they got to be part of the solution. Otherwise, they're part of the problem. So we, we continue to work on that. The other thing that's, on that topic, if I, if I can, and I, and I guess I will, as long as nobody's telling me not to, we, a number of years ago, when the economy got bad and school districts were laying off teachers, back when it was about 2008, 2009, 2010, there were literally a glut of certified teachers available and looking to substitute. And at that point, we, we made a conscious decision to prioritize certified substitutes. Because if you hire a certified substitute, there's no guarantee that they'll do a good job in the classroom, but at the very least, you know that they've been trained to get their certification on how to deal with, with adolescents or, or younger children. They may not be subject area experts, that's understandable, but they have a better level of training than somebody who's never taught, isn't a certified teacher. And for the longest time here, we've been able to use certified teachers. And we're having the discussion now as to whether we want to start to migrate away from that. I mean, there's a downside. You're not getting substitutes with the same level of training. But potentially, you're getting more substitutes who are available. So there's a, it's a quality-quantity dilemma. So we, and I'm just saying, we've been having, it's not in board policy. It's been purely a, an administrative decision, primarily on my part, that I want the best-trained substitutes in those classrooms. And like I said, for a while there, we were, we were beating away, beating them away with the baseball bat, and so many of them were getting laid off from their regular jobs, that they were, they were a glut on the market. Those were good days. As the economy's gotten better and school districts have hired many of them back, and again, this has happened over the course of four, four years or so, there are fewer of them. So we're having discussions about, should we start to use more non-certified substitutes in our substitute force? The other problem with availability of substitutes, regardless of whether they're certified or not, is unless they're working, unless you work them a lot, they'll find another school district that will work them a lot. And, you know, we have some people in our sub-list who, last year, they worked like three times all year.
Right.
Because they're working other places. And they're going to go where they're getting called more regularly. So then that makes it difficult, you know, you call them, no, I'm going to pick a name of a school district, because they call me several times a week, and, and you guys are only calling me once a week. So- So I'm going to go where I'm going to get more work, and that's, that's creating a problem. Again, it's not just Rhinebeck. It's all over the state. Because the same phenomenon that put all those certified teachers into the market is now pulling them out. And it's, again, it's not just us. So it's, we'll, we'll keep working on some ideas. We may dip our toe in the water and go back to trying some highly, as highly skilled, educated, non-certified people, see how they work out. I'm just telling you, we're having that conversation. Now, we haven't made a decision yet. We'll see.
Anyone else? Okay. May I have a, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Jennifer Ramo and David Jutton to conduct athletic placement process, APP, fitness testing for the 2016-17 fall sports season as necessary?
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised previous year's school tax bills refunding a total of $765.77 in reduction adjustments and to make the appropriate refund to the property owner from the district's tax statutory reserve?
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a final reading modifications to board policy number 5300, District Code of Conduct?
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the board president and superintendent of schools to exec, execute the 2015-16 Implementation Certification Form for the Annual Professional Performance Review for classroom teachers and building principals pursuant to Education Law Section 3012(c) and Part 30-2 of the Rules of the Board of Regents.
So moved.
So moved.
Any discussion? Lisa?
Is that date right, 2015-16?
Yes, because it's for this past, this year just passed. That's correct.
Okay. Steve?
Could just get a little background on what all these codes mean?
Yeah, well, ED Law Section 3012(c) and Part 30-2 are the, the education, well, the first one is ED Law, and the second one, the Part 30-2, is the Commissioners' Regulations that, that define how school districts are required to evaluate their teaching, their administrative staff. So those, those numbers just point out the section in education law and the section in Commissioners' Regulations that outlines how you have to do it. Actually, we're, we're now living in the world of 3012(c), although we, as are many other school districts, are still negotiating that as we're required to do with our, with our teacher and administrative bargaining units. But next year, it'll say 3012(c) and 30 dash, or maybe it's 31 dash 2, whatever, it's the next, the next diversion with the changes that, that have been sent our way. And this resolution is something that the State Education Department requires school districts to do every summer. Maybe they don't trust this, I'm not sure, but they require the board president, the superintendent, to sign off on a form that says, we've, we've evaluated our teachers and our administrators according to those numbers, that law and that regulation that's on the books right now. So we do, and we complete the form, and the board has to authorize us to sign, you know, sign the form and send it in. So this is, I think, the third or fourth year that we've done this. It's pretty much a pro forma thing. I mean, for us, because we're doing, you know, we're doing the evaluation, so this says, yeah, we're doing it true to the plan that we have submitted that they've approved, so.
Thanks.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And may I have a motion to move into executive session for a discussion of a matter regarding a particular student?
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We're moving into executive session.